Monday, first of all, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Monday, October 21st, 2024, Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand. Speaker Rose, can you lead us?
I have a heart pray. Eternal Father, Lord, we come right now in the name of Jesus, oh God. This is the day, oh God, that you have made where we rejoice and be glad and we thank you, oh God, for this meeting on tonight with the mayor and the council and the city officials and all the Inkster residents, Lord God, that you bless and a mighty way as only you can. We know you're able, God, that's nothing that's too hard for you. Lay your hands up on reaching everyone here today, oh Lord God. Give them wise counsel, Lord God, that they make wise decisions for the betterment of this city and the citizens, oh God, that they come together and want a call where they use their strength, as divided cannot stand. Come together, Lord God, listen to each other, oh God, and pray before they come out here out of that room back there, Lord God. Help us all, Lord God, that we be citizens here, upstanding citizens and upright citizens, Lord God. Blessed and a mighty way, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop, excused. Councilwoman Scott, present. Councilwoman Howard, excused. Excuse me. Councilwoman Richardson, excused. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Woo, barely. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. We added a couple presentations. Cassie McBride under presentations, and then we're gonna have a veterans, a VFW.
Fourth district.
Fourth district, American Legion presentation also. And under new business, we have items A, B, and C, and we added item D, discussion action, approval of a conditional liquor license for the Stardust Lounge. Do we need to add anything else, or are we good on the agenda? We have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some more.
Second.
They probably moved the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, presentations. Mr. McBride, come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am honored to have time for a presentation. I didn't know I had so much time today. So I appreciate that. But again, I'm Cassie Jones McBride. I am the founder, executive director of the International Full of Women Network. And I want to talk a little bit about what my organization is planning on doing for addressing the portion of justice when it comes to getting to the polls. I know that in Inkster for the past few years, layering is the conversation about how to get access to the polls. And so I've been busy trying to get funding necessary for me to address that. So I'm offering rides to everyone that needs it, either via Lyft from your home back to the poll and then back to your home. If you are in need of lifts during the early voting period, which is October 26th through Sunday, November 3rd, and on Election Day, Tuesday, November 5th, you can call this number, and there's flyers at the door as well, but it's 313-329-0292. You need to have a cellphone. You don't have to have a Lyft, we're using Lyft for the arrangement of the rides. You do not need to have a Lyft account to receive a ride. And then it's between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00 for the early voting period and on Election Day between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to give you time to get back and forth before the polls close. We're also doing free shuttles for seniors to the polls, and we're gonna make a tour through NACAN transport through all the four senior centers in Inkster. So at Twin Towers, at Cherry Hill Place, Thompson Towers, and Cherry Hill Square. So that is gonna run between, well, on October 29th and November 1st, we're doing the shuttles. And then I'm trying to get, see if they have capacity for us to also do it on Election Day. We're kind of working out those details. But it will be between 10:00 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. Where I taking people from the towers that are able-bodied as well as people who are disabled. So the only caveat is that we will have to take less people on that ride because they take out some of the seats to accommodate wheelchairs, but we are able to do all of those things. And so again, that's a ride to the polling location, then back to whatever senior center you were originating from. So that's again, October 29th and November, I'm sorry, and November 1st on that Friday. Again, that's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. I'm also doing a Souls to the Polls event with Christ Temple City of Refuge, which is on Carlisle Street in Inkster. So on the first day of early voting, which is October 26th, which is Saturday, we're gonna have a caravan, a democracy, I like to call it, to the Inkster Clerk Office. So we're gonna have people line up in the parking lot of the church, and then we're gonna have like a little caravan to the polls. And then afterwards, to celebrate this historic day, because it's gonna be historic, because I am trusting that we're gonna have record numbers this election cycle, you're welcome to come back to the Operation Refuge Building across the street for dinner that I have for you. So that caravan begins at 1:00. All festivities should end around 3:00, 3:30. So you're welcome to join us on October 26th. Again, starting at 1:00 is when everybody will be lining up in the parking lot, and then it will end around 3:00 p.m. And also, I'm committed to making sure that I feed all of the poll workers and poll monitors in the city. So I'm hiring poll monitors. We need about 18 for all the precincts in the city. And also, I'm committing to feeding the 94 workers that we have, so they don't have to worry about getting some good food while they do the work of the people. And I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Let me make sure I understand. You're gonna make sure everybody gets the polls for free.
Yeah.
Early voting and Election Day.
Yes, yeah.
You're going to feed anybody who goes to the rally this Saturday, on the 26th.
Yes.
And you're gonna make sure all the poll workers eat.
Yes.
Can we? We got to name a street after her.
She's spoiling us, Mr. Mayor.
At least a parking spot somewhere, at least. Any questions that you have for me at all, or anybody?
Just a comment, I'd just like to just thank you from the bottom of my heart for working with me and making this happen.
Thank you for your leadership in making this also possible. Thank you.
Everybody grab a flyer. If anybody have transportation issues, make sure they get it.
Yes.
No excuse.
No excuses. And any questions at all, please call that phone number as well, leave a text message as well, and I'll be able to answer that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can say too, she's really setting the bar and setting the precedent with this, and a lot of our people who say they give any other type of reason as to why they can't get to the polls to vote, me and the clerk had spoken, it was like, you have the early voting, you have absentee voting, you have these options right here that Cassie is presenting to us, and I mean, it's Inkster, it's not that big. I understand some people don't have transportation, not the most able-bodied, but for some of our folks, they can walk to their polling location, they just choose not to. But we choose to walk to like the liquor store or the corner store or something like that, because that's a little bit more important, because that insta-gratification. So I just commend you all for that, because we make up too many excuses. I know I've been at the polling locations in the past, and I've had people who were there in that morning that said, I couldn't get in to vote this morning, and blah, 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 and I'm not about to stand in line this evening. And I'm thinking to myself, and you are really disenfranchising yourself by having that particular mindset, because whatever issues we had at those polling locations, I told the residents, take note of it, report it to the city council, report it to the clerk, report it to whoever you need to, so that we can make sure it gets resolved. Because when you just walk away from the situation, in four years, two years, whatever, it still exists and it does not get fixed.
Right.
So thank you.
And also, I just wanted to lift that I talked to the, I had a presentation to the Inkster Ministerial Alliance. I didn't know there was 29 churches in Inkster. But I did talk to them about having one other Souls to the Polls opportunity on the last day of voting, which is November 2nd. So, but also that is first Sunday, so I know that could be a little difficult for some churches, but I am still offering the same thing we did for Christ Temple for another church, so if you know of any churches that would be interested, please reach out to that phone number.
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Veterans presentation? Okay, a veterans presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council.
Good evening.
Really appreciate, I need to take these off. Really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. Can you hear me now? Oh, okay. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you today, and I know you weren't expecting us, or appreciate you making time for us, but as you know, the government moves slow. No. But the thing is, the reason why we're here today is two, for a couple of things. One is to honor your father. So. A lot of veterans that served during Vietnam have not been made aware of a 50th anniversary lapel pin. And we have had the hardest time trying to identify these veterans. And we're asking for the community, if you know of any veterans that served during Vietnam, and when I say during Vietnam, we're not talking about in the 60s. People don't know that Korea, Korea War ended May 31st, 1955. Six months later, we were in Vietnam, November of 1955. So if there's anyone that served from November 1st, 1955 to May 15th, in 1975, they are eligible to receive this pin. All we need is the name, branch of service, we submit it to Department of Defense, and they send us the pin to pin them. Now, the sad part is, is that a lot of these veterans have passed on without receiving their recognition. So with that, with that being said, and that was identified, they have issued a blue star pin for the surviving family, the spouse or next of kin family member. So we're here today to pin you on behalf of your father. With me today, so I'm the VFW Fourth District, which covers all of Wayne County. I'm also commander of the Second District of the American Legion, which covers Washtenaw, Monroe, Lenawee, and Jackson County. To my right is Gary De Mars, is the Zone Commander that covers all of us. So he covers Wayne County in addition to my four counties. So he, they reconfigured, so it's the Zone now, so we're part of Wayne County under the Zone. And our 16th, Inkster falls in the 16th District of the American Legion. And we had a conversation some months ago, that Inkster had a post, post 265, which at conference this year was closed. So Inkster does not have an American Legion or a VFW post. And ironically, the post that was closed on the American Legion side was called Bivens Bonner. Anyone know Mr. Bivens? Been around forever. When I was growing up as a kid, I was impressed with the VFW post. Some of you may not know, we had a VFW post in Inkster, which Lonnie Parham ran out of his barber shop on Inkster Road. So what we're here today is to honor your father and to spark some interest in some of the residents of the city, to get back on board with the American Legion and try to get things running again, because there's benefits that would help them and the family and your community.
Yeah, I want to thank Commander Green for allowing me to show up. He gave me a call and said, I'm gonna do a presentation in Inkster. Would you like to go? I'm also a VFW member. And I said, well, I'm gonna wear my Legion cap. I wear a couple caps. But American Legion's a really easy way to get into now. We used to have seven war eras that you had to be in. If there were some eras in the Cold War, you couldn't be a Legionnaire, which didn't make any sense to me when I was growing up in the American Legion. But that's all changed now, there's two war eras. After World War II, anything from then on is considered a campaign, you can be American Legion. And the VFW, it's a little bit different. If you can join the VFW, you can certainly join the American Legion, but you have to step foot and ground in the campaign to join the VFW. I was in Vietnam, Mr. Green was in Vietnam.
No, I'm not that old. I'm two-time golfer.
Okay, I'm a young Vietnam veteran. I was actually there when they signed the P Street. I was in Saigon, and from there I went to Thailand and finished my duty there. So yeah, he's younger than me, but that's okay. But anyway, so that's why we're here, and I say, I'd love to be able to just talk to y'all and say, you know, it's a great organization, they do lots of benefits. As a matter of fact, I won't tell you who told me, someone in the audience just said, have you gotten everything you need from the VA? And I says, oh yeah, I think so. Well, he convinced me I didn't. He's sitting back here. So I'm gonna be talking to them real soon about everything.
So because of the presentation, and some of you may or may not know, and you know, we good at employing people to assist us in these presentations. And I had recruited one of your colleagues, Lindsey Scott. For those of you that may or may not know, Lindsey Scott is my great niece. Yes. So it's, it's, it's really an honor to have her to assist me. So her grandmother served on council, I served on council, so she's keeping it going. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, would you please come forward? So what we're going to do, Councilman Scott, she's gonna read the proclamation. Now, there's two pins I'm gonna present to you. The first pin is gonna be for your dad, and to honor him for his service. This pin is for you, especially coming up so close to Veterans Day, that the sacrifices that the family have made while your loved ones have served in defending this country. So, Councilman Scott?
It's on my phone, so I can read it from you. Just bear with me, it's a little small. This is the commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War by the President of the United States.
Can't, hold on, we can't hear it.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? As we observe the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, we reflect with a solemn reverence upon the valor of a generation that served with honor. We pay tribute to more than three million servicemen and women who left their families to serve bravely, a world away from everything they knew and everyone they loved. From, bear with me with the names, from Adurang to Kisan, from Hu to Saigon, and countless villages in between. They pushed through jungles, rice paddies, and in heat and monsoons, fighting heroically to protect ideals that we hold dear as Americans. Through more than a decade of combat, over air, land, and sea, these proud Americans upheld the highest traditions of our armed forces. As a grateful nation, we honor more than 58,000 patriots, their names etched in black granite, who sacrificed all they had and all they would ever know. We draw inspiration from the heroes who suffered unspeakably as prisoners of war, yet who returned home with their head held high. We pledge to keep faith with those who were wounded and still carry the scars of war, seen and unseen. With more than 1,600 of our servicemen members still among the missing, we pledge as a nation to do everything in our power to bring these patriots home. In the reflection of the wall, we see the military family members and veterans who carry the pain that may never fade. May they find peace in knowing their loved ones endure not only the medals and memorials, but the hearts, but in the hearts of all Americans. We are forever grateful for their service, valor, and sacrifice. In recognition of a chapter in our nation's history that we must never, that must never be forgotten, let us renew our sacred commitment to those who answered our country's call in Vietnam and those who awaited their safe return. Beginning on Memorial Day in 2012, the federal government will partner with local governments, private organizations, and communities across America to participate in the commemoration of the 50th anniversary of Vietnam, I'm sorry, of the Vietnam War, and the 13th Year Program to honor and give thanks to the generation of proud Americans who saw our country through one of the most challenging missions, missions, and we have ever faced. While no words will ever fully be worthy of their service, nor any honor truly befit for their sacrifice, let us remember that it is never too late to pay tribute to the men and women who answered the call of duty with courage and valor. Let us renew our commitment to the fullest possible accounting for those who have not returned. Throughout this commemoration, let us strive to live up to their example by showing our Vietnam veterans, their families, and those who have served with the fullest respect and support of our grateful nation. Now therefore, I, Barack Obama, President of the United States of America, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim May 28th, 2012 through November 11th, 2025, as a commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. I call upon federal, state, and local officials to honor our Vietnam veterans, our fallen, our wounded, and those unaccounted for, our former prisoners of war, their families, and who all have served the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
What she's about to read is what the pin is.
The Vietnam veteran lapel pin is presented on behalf of the grateful nation of the living United States veterans who served on active duty in the United States Armed Forces at any time during the period of November 1st, 1995, or 1955, sorry, to May 15th, 1975. Regardless of location of service, each veteran is eligible to receive one lapel pin. The symbolism, the eagle, the eagle represents the courage, honor, and dedicated service to our nation. As one of the most recognizable and notable American symbols, it emblom, oh, he's catching me up.
Emblazoned.
Emblazoned, thank you. With the distinction of numerous military insignia, blue circle, the color blue matches the cannon of the American flag and signifies the vigilance, perseverance, and justice. The circle shaped in the blue color also matches the official seal of the commemoration. The laurel wreath, a time-honored symbol representing victory, integrity, and strength. The stripes, the stripes behind the eagle represent the American flag. The stars, the six stars represent the six allies who served, sacrificed, and fought alongside one another, Australia, New Zealand, the Philippines, the Republic of Korea, Thailand, and the United States. The message, a grateful nation thanks and honors you. It embosses the, on the back, closest to the heart of the wearer. Also, the official name of the commemoration is included to remind each veteran that this is a national initiative, and the lapel pin is the nation's last memento of thanks, lasting memento of thanks.
And that's what your father, the pin is for your father, for him, then you keep that. The pin that I'm going to pin you with is the blue star pin, it's the family pin. We don't have a board for it. But it says that the, the blue star symbolize the Blue Star family during veterans' period of service. The red circle represents the sacrifice of both the veteran and the family in service to our country. The blue circle, the color blue matches the cannons of the American flag, signifies vigilance, perseverance, and justice. The laurel wreath, a time-honored symbol representing honor and victory. And again, on the back, a grateful nation honors the service and sacrifice your family is embossed on the back, closest to the heart of the wearer, and the nation's lasting message of thanks. This pin I will pin you with. That being said, now, again, you have the other pin?
No.
This one is for your father. With that in the folder, can you give it to the mayor so you can remember what all, everything on that pin represents? So the other thing I want to say, and I don't want to take up much of your time. The American Legion in this area has fallen short on a lot of things. And a lot of people don't understand the benefits of the American Legion and VFW, because there's so many scholarships out there for your kids, your grandkids. It's unbelievable. Right now, we're working on what's called oratoricals for the American Legion, where a kid, you don't have to be a member of a veteran. Any kid can apply for oratoricals. And what oratoricals for the American Legion is, they focus on the Constitution of the United States. So you give presentations, you get with a post, you sign up, the post take you to the district level, district, you can win money there, you go to the department level of Michigan, you go to national, you can end up with about $25,000 in scholarships. The VFW have a program called Voice of Democracy, and they have Patriots pin. Patriots pin is for ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. The Voice of Democracy is for seniors, 12th graders. And we also, the American Legion have a program called Boys State.
Boys State.
Boys State, Girls State, anyone that want to get involved in local government. There's monies there for that, so they could teach them how the government works. We have a lot of scholarships to give away. Give you an example, in my district, four counties I represent, four counties. Last year, we only had one applicant. That's sad. Not sure what, I think the first zone had one.
Yeah, let me, can I just touch base?
Sure.
Oratorical, I mean, you have to see an oratorical presentation to believe it. They're high school kids from ninth to 12th grade, they're given some topics on the U.S. Constitution, and then they have to a free-form speak on it without notes. And I was a guy, I was a person judging them one time, and I'm going, this is hard to believe. They knew more about the Constitution than I did. As a matter of fact, the young lady out of American Legion, she went all the way to the national, out of this metropolitan area. So it's really a great, great thing. And another thing I want to talk about, Mayor, if you can take advantage of this, the American Legion and VFW have a group called Auxiliary. If your father, grandfather is eligible for VFW, and yours was, it looks like, you can become a VFW Auxiliary member. You don't have to join it. You can also do that for American Legion, it's called American Legion Auxiliary. And they have, they have women. Auxiliary, there's a lot, a lot of females, because they are joining the auxiliary because their husband was in the service. Okay. And so they also join. And then the American Legion has a group called S.A.L., Sons of American Legion. This is an interesting group. If you're a child and your dad was eligible for the Legion, you could become a son of American Legion. So there's three organizations that you try to get, and all do different kinds of.
You forgot one. Riders.
Oh, yeah. And I'm a rider too. American Legion, American Legion Riders. And they kid me because I ride a Honda now, but I used to have a big Honda, but it was 800 pounds, I couldn't handle it anymore. But anyway, we have a call the Riders, and the VFW have Riders, I belong to that, and American Legion Riders. And by the way, November 10th, a very nice Veterans Day parade downtown Detroit. And if you haven't seen one, it's really fantastic. So just a little thing about the American Legion, and like I said, I wear two hats, and so does Mr. Green. And I have a young man who's sitting in the back row, Tashawn. You need to take advantage of that. He's interested in, I think it'd be a great program, the oratorical program.
Yes.
Yeah. Can you make sure you give him your information?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So. So everyone, you have my card. I know one time you had put my number on the website somewhere. No one ever called.
Really?
No one.
We're trying to get the, the post restarted back in Inkster, because there's a lot of veterans in Inkster. So we just need somebody to step up as a leader, get everybody else together.
So this is what I've done thus far, just so you know. Starting Thursday. Starting Thursday. Gethsemane Missionary Baptist Church, Pastor Duckworth, over in Westland on Eaton. Uh, Gethsemane is now considered a, uh, wellness center. So they're open Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Thursday, and Sunday. Nine to five on Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine thirty to one thirty on Sunday. I'm going to be there every Thursday from nine to twelve. So anyone that's interested, you have questions about the benefits, we need questions answered about scholarships. You want to come see me, I will be there Thursdays, nine to twelve, to answer those questions and to get you the, the resources that you need. So please get that out there.
Another touch base on the resources, any veteran that needs the VA, any veteran here should also sign up for VA. I have a twin brother, I belong to the VA and I go to the medical, he refuses to go. I said, what, you've lost your mind? Well, I don't need it, I said, well, I don't know, it's the same reason as me, so I think. But, uh, in that head is, if you have a need, VFW and American Legion have service officers. It's an official term, service officers. The service officers downtown in the back of their building, I think they found that, but every post has service officers typically. And they'll help you do claims. So when you go and you're claiming for benefits from the VA, if you're not getting what you think you should get, you can engage the service officer and they'll work through the process of, or any of those. One of the veterans that joined the VFW, or the American Legion. And, uh, I'm going to talk about Amis, but we don't talk so too much.
There's, there's, and we got to go, no, you got business to take care of. The other thing is Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, Teacher of the Year. These are all awards that we give out, VFW and the American Legion, no one never applies. So now, before COVID hit, uh, is Officer Levinson still with the city?
Yep.
So I'm just putting on the record, Officer Levin, Officer Levinston is, uh, the Officer of the Year prior to COVID, and he's probably going to be getting recognition coming soon, probably for that whole span. I'm gonna tell you, Officer Levinston is the only person that I know that he bring people together by writing them tickets. This is, this is a true story. Anyone that Levinston had wrote a ticket to, they smiled about it, yeah, he got me. But it's so funny because it's like, they get together, they should have a picnic on everybody, he gave her tickets. So thank you for your time, and I will be back once teacher, Officer of the Year, Teacher of the Year, once those candidates are concluded, but Levinston is definitely going to be receiving something from the VFW.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a comment to, uh, Mr. Green.
Michael.
Mr. Green. Um, there was a young lady here last week, well, last council meeting, who was doing hometown heroes, um, she wanted to do for, um, and I would like to give her your contact information, just wanted to make sure that that was good, I think you guys would work.
Heroes, Heroes, the hometown is one of the programs of the American Legion.
Okay, yeah, so I'll give her your contact information.
Yes, they even wants a mic number, you know, I have a rough time.
All we need is to submit their name and their brand of service to VFW, to the county. It ends, keep in mind, if you read it, the program, when the federal council set it up, it ends next year, twenty twenty five, so we're trying to get extended because of a lot of time. Thank you.
Before you gentlemen leave, um, you had spoke of the oratorical ju, uh, contest, right? And then the gentleman spoke about the American Legion Department of Michigan Region, Legion Riders. I'm not sure if we crossed paths or not, but in twenty twenty two, I had the honor of being a judge as well with Dave Kennedy and Ashley Zimmer up in Lansing. And you are, you hit it dead on the head when you talked about the kids come out there, or the students come out there and what they have to speak on, and they have literally like ten minutes to be briefed on what they're going to speak on and go off the top of their head. And it's absolutely iconic.
It's so impressive, it's hard to believe, I mean, so, you know, I really feel bad because they're so much smarter than me, I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, guys, take care.
Thank you.
Okay, consider it. Consider it, gentlemen.
Some more.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. New business.
Consider approval.
We're all in the commission now, nation.
Nice job.
Thank you so much.
Okay, new business.
Consider approval to implement a new pre-development meeting policy regarding purchasing vacant land for required development in Inkster. A pre-development meeting policy sets the foundation for a successful project by promoting clear communication, risk management, and stakeholder collaboration.
Some more.
Was the language in there?
I think that, but like, though, if I heard it right.
Let's get the. Second for discussion.
Oh, sorry, second.
All right, discussion, go ahead.
Uh, if I heard it right, it was like, it said required development, I don't know if I heard it right. You know what I mean, like, I thought it was pretty much the paperwork is the requirement, it sounded like the development, like, can you help me, Ashley? Like.
So if, if they are first in property, if they want to develop a pre-conception meeting.
Is required.
Is the requirement.
Right.
In order to come before they have.
Yes. Everybody clear on that?
That's what I'm, okay, okay, so I thought I heard it was like, okay, perfect, I just wanted to make sure.
Wait, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of accepting the LEAP Grant Led Education and Fossil Replacement Program in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen. Additionally, we are requesting approval of the appropriations for this grant and related amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
They probably moved to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of the administration requesting acceptance of a one million dollar grant from the federal government for the replacement of fire apparatus, fire truck.
Some more.
Second.
They probably moved to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes.
Consider conditional approval of liquor license for Stardust Lounge, Starlux Group LLC.
Some more.
Second.
Probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes. On the roll. Public participation. Remember, everybody's limited to three minutes. When the beef go off, that means you got to go sit down. Um, so the first person we have is Latoria Triplet.
I'm like, Latoria, you got three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and everybody here in the viewing, viewing audience. My name is Latoria Triplet. I'm here on behalf of the Department of Public Service to read you a statement. Um, some of you already have this information, it was sent to you on cold red. For those of you who have cold red, for those of you who don't, um, cold red will give you firsthand information about what's going on in the city. It's the truth, the whole truth, and none but the truth. So if you want to sign up, you can see me after this meeting, and I will get you signed up for it. But I'm just going to read this statement that the Department of Public Services will no longer, um, be dis, uh, distributing water filters. So the statement says, as of September the thirtieth, twenty twenty four, local distribution of filters has officially ended according to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, M D H H S. If you need a filter, you should reach out directly to M D H H, M D H H S for assistance. They can provide the necessary support and information on how to obtain filters moving forward, forward. It's important to contact them if you have any questions or need help with your filter requirements as local sources are no longer available. Stay informed and ensure, you stay informed and ensure you get the resources you need from the appropriate state department. So I'm going to give you a telephone number to call, anybody that needs a filter. The telephone number is, ready? Eight four four, nine three four, one three, one five. And I did bring some of these statements with me, I put them over on the table there, so just make sure you get one. And it's on the website, thank you. Any question?
All right, Rochelle, Rochelle Wells.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and all attending members. Um, this message is for, from the Inkster Task Force, the Inkster Commission on Aging, and the Top Ladies of Distinction. The Information and Wellness Forum will be held on Thursday, this Thursday, October the twenty fourth, from eleven thirty to two thirty P M, with the presentations on wellness and well-being at the Dozier Recreation Complex, twenty twenty five Middle Belt Road, Inkster. There will be free gifts, there, there is a luncheon, but you must register to attend this meeting. The registration number to call is three one three, five six one, two three eight two. And, um, that will set you, get you, um, where you need to be for this coming Thursday at eleven thirty. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And that's for seniors, y'all, senior annual luncheon. Okay, Octavia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. I'm just coming to give everybody, um, just a final reminder, well, because this is the last city council meeting before the event. Um, you all know that Inkster is celebrating sixty years, Inkster have caught up with me, you know? Um, and we're going to have our celebration, is celebrating the city of Inkster became a city in nineteen sixty four. So the sixtieth celebration party will be on Saturday, November the second, at the Bliss Event Center. We do not want you all to, um, not get an opportunity to attend, it's going to be wonderful and great. And we're going to celebrate our city, so we don't want you to miss out. So, um, if you don't have a ticket, I, I sold all mine, but I can get some more. And, uh, we want to make sure everyone gets their tickets. So that's what I'm here for, thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you and just celebrating the city of Inkster, thank you.
Thank you. Regina Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, residents of Inkster.
Good evening.
I'm here to complain. Uh, I was here at a meeting some time ago, and I did get a response. I have to give Stephen credit, he did come to my house, he looked at everything, and he was trying to help me, but, uh, nothing really got taken care of. I think it's a shame that you have to live next door to people that you can't even go in your own backyard because theirs looks so bad. There's chickens running around, in fact, one chased, they chased my son to his car. We got the turkey still running around. I, uh, called the police department, uh, yeah, it was the police department I called, because they had so many cars over there, it's nothing for them to have ten, fifteen, twenty, almost twenty cars next door. And when I called, I didn't get the person's name, but I wish I had them. And I told him what was going on, he said, well, maybe they're just working on cars. That's what they told me at the police station, they're just working on cars. So I guess they, they still working on cars now. One minute you see, uh, I mean, there's so many cars, it's ridiculous. Uh, they, um, like I say, they don't clean, they don't clean up their backyard. My yard is clean. I asked them, they're, they're from another country, I asked them the other day, they, they put their trash out after the trash man had come. And when they put trash out, it looks like they're being evicted every, every week, okay? And so I went to the door and I said, is there anybody over there that speaks English? And one of the fellas says, no, I speak Spanish. So if he could tell me he speaks Spanish, he understood English, okay? But anyway, I told them, I explained to them what they needed to do, I said, you need to take that trash from in the front of your house and put it back on the side, I said, because if they come through, you could get a ticket. Haven't seen nobody get a ticket, but anyway, I told them, but they did move it, they put it to the side. The other day, as a matter of fact, uh, was the end of last week, I seen the code enforcement car go down the street. On the opposite side of the street that I live on, there's a car that's been down there all summer, it's raggedy, the windows are busted out, the hood is up, and the code enforcement car, it slowed down a little bit, but not enough to even write down the t, the address, and it kept going. So all the complaints that I've, I've called so many times, and nothing is being done, you know, like around the corner from me where these chickens are coming from. Like I told one of the ladies I talked to, I said, Inkster used to be a village. When we were a village, you could have chickens and, you know, ducks, cows, whatever you wanted. I guess my time is up, huh? But now you can't have that. So anyway, my complaint is, if Inkster would just please, I pay my taxes religiously. I don't feel like I should have to live next to a house that's really messed up, and my son has pictures of it, okay?
Somebody over tomorrow.
All right.
Reminded you. Garen.
Wow, you got my name, bro.
It's a unique name.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, yes, that was my mother. And yes, the house next door to us is eyesore. It looks like the results of a poverty stricken, of, of a country that, uh, is poverty stricken and the result of war, that's how bad it is. And like she, she was saying, at any point in time, it could be double-digit cars in between their house and the house ne, next door. And by double digits, we're not talking two or four, no, ten, maybe fourteen. I counted sixteen cars one day, including the four that was in the backyard. And like I said, yeah, it's a, it's a eyesore, it's really a eyesore. They parked in the front yard. Now, now, I know if I parked my car in the front yard before I even got out the car, good, I would have a ticket. They parked the wrong way, and when you try to talk to them, they play that, 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 uh, don't speak English card. And it's difficult to not. What's the word I'm looking for here, um? I'm sorry. Not, not a, not retaliate, but to talk to them like I have sense. It's difficult because they be out there, whatever, whatever, whatever. And I really want to come outside and I want to yell out, English, blank, blank, do you speak it? But I don't because I wasn't raised like that. But again, it's an eyesore, and we should not have to be subjected to that. I'm, I'm just saying, if you're going to come over here, at least speak our language. That's all.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gabe Henderson.
Gabe Henderson, Vietnam veteran with two Bronze Stars. I'm here for the, uh, Inkster Goodfellas, we had our pancake, uh, breakfast Saturday. It was a great success with the participation of our family, you know, and hello, family, how y'all doing? Okay, sorry. And we want to thank you, uh, and we also, you know, we have talked with, uh, anyone who want to put a business size, uh, card, you know, on our paper, our paper be coming out soon, so I don't know. But I do say this, that if the, if individuals want to, you know, give a, uh, uh, information to the clerk, it would be okay, clerk, if they, you know, get, that, if you want to put a, your business size, uh, and, um, and we'd be out, uh, in December with our paper. Uh, and any, uh, we're going to have a donation. And any, we're going to have a donation canister here at City Hall, and hoping that y'all, you know, help us along with that. And also, we're going to probably, we're going to have a box there also for toys and all that. And that's about all I have to say, but thank you again. I hope everything was suitable, you know, and pancakes, bacon, sausage. Yeah.
And the turkey bacon was pretty.
Yeah, you know, it was nice, you know? I want to thank y'all again and all that. And our president, Barbara Cooper, she's, I think, you know, she got a good voice. She sings all the time. I think she sang too much, she lost her voice. She would be here, and she want to thank you also for helping us along, the Goodfellas, you know? And pray for her, because I know she's going to have to sing in church next week. Pray for her, her voice come back, so she can sing, okay? I love y'all, I love y'all. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to, Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
This is for the Inkster Beautification Committee, is there a final cleanup this month?
Yes, last year.
Last Saturday of this month, right. A book of Dozier. Right, I'm sorry about that.
This has, okay. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, we had, somebody sent in comments?
Yes. We have a public comment from Charles Blackwell. It will be added to the public comments and put into the meeting minutes, and it has been distributed to Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Any comments, Madam Clerk?
Just gearing up for early voting, October 26th and 27th, 8:00 to 4:00, Saturday and Sunday. Monday through Friday, the 28th through the 1st, 8:30 to 4:30. And the last Saturday and Sunday, the 2nd and 3rd, 8:00 to 4:00. All nine days are here at City Hall. I have been also going out to senior residents and to individuals that are enabled to come in and registering them for their absentee ballot, and also distributing them their ballots. So I have been doing that. I attended the NAACP Western Wayne County 77th Anniversary Freedom Fund Dinner on Saturday, October 20th, and it was beautiful. Also, early voting will be put again on Code Red, and looking to see all you at the polls, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Trezor. Okay. Councilwoman Scott.
One quick one. So a few of our constituents, mine, so Motivating Inner New Dreams and the Grab and Go Effect, are partnering with Westland's Pizza Cat for a Slice of Hope, so it's a breast cancer awareness initiative. So that's being held this Saturday, September 26th, from 12:00 to 3:00. The Pizza Cat on Ann Arbor Trail in Westland. And a portion of those sales will go toward breast cancer research with the Carmelo Cancer Institution. Oh, October, I'm sorry, isn't it technically September, October? And that's it.
That's it? Councilwoman Roberts?
No comments, Mayor.
No vote, too?
No comments.
Oh, wow. Okay. Just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Scott for reading that dissertation today. My father would definitely appreciate it. Now, you got me thinking about him. Monday Night Football starts in six minutes. So we're going to get rolling, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some more support.
Republic moved supportive discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Where Meyer's at?
He's not here tonight.
He just walked in? Yeah?
7:55.
Oh, no, you ain't got no seat. You need to shine something? Give it to me.
Me too.
I'm running, I got to change clothes.